Size or smaller percentage wise. I say I know on this. I'm just trying to see everything in. Don, you just said something. That need a little more clarification. Help us. I'm sorry. I'll track your comments. It's a good thing.
I want to follow up on your question. In terms of support, you said you're asking for our support. And you said you wanted our input. So the question is, what is it that you're actually asking for?
That's it.
And whose decision is it? Is it the mayor's or is it ours or is it a joint one or what?
Well, I can tell you how it goes for us. We need the mayor's support in order to submit an application that's competitive.
Okay.
So we've gone to the mayor and you've said we'd like your support. He said, I really want my counsel to weigh in on this. So that's why I'm here to say.
If I may add a point of clarification, the mayor also asked my opinion as you'll recall. Don came before this body the last time the mayor gave his support when it was a senior housing, senior, you know, senior project. And I thought it most prudent to give you counsel then an opportunity to know what's going on and voice any opinion, given the fact that the project has changed nature slightly.
And how soon do you need this answered?
Tonight.
They started about two weeks ago.
You're in the sixth, Jerry. You're past two.
It was before you left for China. So whenever that was, but no, it started really coming together for us about a month and a half ago. I just kept looking at the market going, I've got to do something with that building. And so I asked the marketing analysts to run some of these other numbers to make sure there was really a need still here. Because I don't want to overpopulate. PSI has a 64 unit project at Tree City Estates and we don't want to, we don't want to hurt that property. I strongly believe there's enough need here for this development. So that's why we're asking for your support.
And I think your statistics strongly get support then too.
I agree.
That in addition, that you've been trying to do something to stress that before.
Sometimes a baby.
And gentlemen, we play both sides of the middle here if you will. If somebody else happens to come along and purchases the building, that takes over everything. Then you're, then you're out of the business on that building, correct?
We will tie that building up if you give me the support this evening. I will tie that building up so that it can be purchased at least through spring of next year. That's when the awards come out and they come out at the end of February.
So if we, if I sign this support, no one else will come in and purchase the building?
I'm going to ask, yeah, that's what I did last year. Tied it up basically with an option to purchase.
I think that needs to be discussed on how that building's taken care of. Who's responsible for it?
They will not be responsible for it because they don't own it. And they won't own it until everything's.
That's correct.
George, next.
Run back to work and see if somebody else would come along and would want to purchase it and do something else. Whether that's still a positive, they will be able to.
I'm just asking for four months basically though. And I don't know of anybody else currently that's looking at the property.
And when it's coming along, a lot of people aren't going to do anything with construction. One other thing that I did last time, if they got, got the grant, I had committed $10,000 out of eddy money towards that to give them more points. So if, and I'm asking, you'd be asking for that again as well.
We can talk about that. You've done some other things in that area that might get you where we need to be.
We've done other things like the trees and things of that nature, which are not the other post.
And I'll be very honest, I think that that other stuff has happened within the last five years. It would, it would count for that. So we can look at that. It's not something I necessarily need.
You asking for a vote of confidence from the council?
Well, does he just want to get a, a sense of the council not necessarily motion? Just have Jamie expressed his opinion, maybe each of us expressed their opinion and it's in his lap. He's the one that's making the decision.
I'm in support of the project.
Jamie?
I'm in support of that.
Blake?
You know, where I am, I am in support, but at the same time, it's going to fall back on us again too.
But you're at least going the right direction of having something done possibly where it's not in limbo forever.
If you support.
Blake? Terry? You have a signature.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Wish us luck because it's still a very competitive process.
And when will you know something in this?
The end of February. I don't remember the exact date, 27th, 28th, something like that. Yeah, you'll get first to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. Ordinance 2013 dash 12 credit card policy. The bridge is with state board accounts.
Yeah, last year, within June last year as clerk and during the audit process, the state board counts discovered that we did not have a credit card policy and that we needed to establish one, just basically stating how credit cards are distributed and used within the city departments. That ordinance was actually a template from City of Jeffersonville, which he had, Mr. Saddam had just finished an audit with. So I worked with him to get it to be.
Acceptable by their standards?
Yeah, acceptable by their standards and, and contain our information. Probably the only thing that they don't have in there yet that I want, that I need to provide would be a full listing of, of the cards and what, who has the authority to use them. I'm working with the department heads to get those. That's part of the ordinance that we would provide counsel with would be like a listing of the cards. Because you would also be have jurisdiction over the cards if there was ever an issue.
Is there ordinance on that now?
No, there's not a current credit card. That's why.
In the new ordinance that you have, does it include that?
Include, I'm sorry.
Would the council have included?
Yeah, it, without reading it word for word.
So you have everything except who has the card?
Yeah, it just says in here that the clerk treasurer will. Let me find the section real quick. Just says clerk treasurer shall notify mayor and city council to open your credit card accounts.
Page.
Yeah. So any, yeah, so copies of financial statements, possession of all cards. Yeah, secure possession of all cards, any individual apartments, city council. What they list of those cards along with the account numbers for each. And I am working with the department heads to make sure I'm getting all those. Because I think where the confusion was maybe in the past with some department heads, you know, you know, like Staples, when they came to town, there was, you know, you could go out there and purchase things, but you could also, you know, they also started providing an online business advantage account too. So the store cards, I think there was a confusion between a, you know, an everyday Visa or MasterCard versus a store card. And state board accounts considers a store card a credit card. Anything that you can purchase on credit and can be posed an interest, interest and/or service charge on is considered a credit card. So they want an administrative policy for that. So it took me a little while to get it together. Just I, after they came back this year with the 2012 audit, I kind of worked with them and tried to get, kind of just, because I wasn't sure how to write it. So I just worked with them and got mine put together so that you guys would be able to have something that says, you have City Greens, Verca's credit cards, and these are the ones that you have. And these are the, who the accounts are with and these are the people that have the authority to use them. So department heads and their desk mates is what, how it's set up right now.
So. The different departments listed here and officers here have credit cards now?
Some of them have store cards, some of them have an actual credit card, yes.
Okay, so we have multiple things. And so on the store cards, do, do they have a limit on there? We've got, we're saying.
Like a general.
Credit limit of $5,000 or one time government spending of $1,000. Are we able to stipulate those things on a store card?
Yes.
Does it make sense for us to have multiple store cards and keep track of multiple cards as opposed to have just a credit card that you've got one statement, one place?
I'm working on that actually because I, I didn't.
Nightmare.
I didn't enter, I didn't enter that with the department heads yet. But it's, it's something that we might try to. Some of those cards were already in place when I came, so.
The thing that kind of took its life over time and changed.
It did. And like I said, state board accounts during the 2011 audit had noticed that we didn't have a policy or that our personnel policy has a place in there for fuel cards. So, you know, because we did get our fuel bid from Speedway this year and that's how they administer that, you know, premier ag was the same way. They had a credit card type process. So I, we may not be able to eliminate them all, but I think we could probably get it down to maybe like a, a MasterCard and a Speedway or premier ag, whoever gets the.
There may be reasons for a particular, your department to have a particular.
And sometimes there are some discounts and stuff, yeah.
I'm not object, I'm just saying, if you've got them all over the place.
It's not too bad. It's not too bad. I know, just talking to state board accounts, I know in other communities like, you know, bigger communities like City of Jeffersonville, I mean, there was hundreds of cards. You know, there's hundreds of employees. So I mean, we're not in that issue, but I mean, it's, it's basic like Walmart, Staples, Speedway, like rural king type thing. I mean, the, you know, the Tops, you know, actually Tops doesn't have a physical card, but you can still go out, you know, PD or street partner or airport, whoever can go out and say, hey, can you put this on my account? So it's still considered an account that has a, a service charge in or fee if it's not paid in a timely manner according to their agreement.
And the reason we want to allow this, counsel, is that I was about the one that had a card to spend any money. And the departments had emergencies where we didn't have a credit set up with some place. The way you buy it was a credit card or cash. So they'll come get my card and they might buy that up in some time.
So you say this is incomplete because you don't have the list of the cards for us? Or this is okay because you will notify us?
The ordinance states that we would, that the clerk treasurer would supply a list. So I would say that's the only part that, that's not complete. I mean, it's kind of, it's in draft form right now just because I've kind of collected some things from some of the other department heads. But because our other audit was getting ready to finish, I felt like we wanted to at least get it into a first reading and discuss it.
But does this ordinance say this, that you have to handle this card?
It says that the clerk treasurer would provide a list. It's the second to last paragraph.
I'm not sure I want to pass on two readings.
No, I didn't.
Let's get rest of the information in. We have to clarify.
Sure. Okay, any other questions, counsel? I'm entertaining a motion to move on. Ordinance 2013 dash 12 credit card policy, first reading. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Passes for free, thank you. Next item. I think it's relatively simple, gentlemen. 2013 dash 13 ordinance, I mean sewer bonds. And I don't know why we couldn't do two readings there, but it says first reading. This is nothing more than to save money. It's $116,000 total in the next six and a half years. Comes to at least $17,900 each year. As you can see, what they have submitted is bond issuance and loan placement agents. And our city attorney, that the cost is probably higher than it's going to be. So it may be a little more than saving $116,000. This is what John Julian says, that it's already saved.
Where this, who initiated this?
John brought it up to me a couple minutes ago. And when the, when the interest got any higher. And he thinks it's the right thing to do, you know, it does. We will call it his cut. Counsel, do you see a reason why we couldn't do both readings tonight on this? The sooner we get this activated, the less chance we have of losing money on it.
No, I can't see any reason why we would not be able to do two reading on it.
Since we're spending money, we're going to save it. Any questions on this, gentlemen? There's no problems. I would entertain a motion to build ordinance 2013 dash 13, refund the sewer bonds, those with $2,000 bonds.
Some, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. First motion passes. I need a motion to suspend the rules, regulations for a second reading. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion passes. Need a motion for a second reading?
Some move. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Nice motion passes unanimous, thank you. Next item is ordinance 2013 dash 14 water rate, first reading. Do you want to do the water rates, sewer rate together or individually?
I think it's, I think when you're discussing, you have this custom individualization.
Okay, Donna, would you like to present this, the findings? Both the board works and the water board has supported this.
I guess this is, I don't have the ordinance numbers on here. I didn't bring my.
2013.
14 or 15. For the water? Water 14, water 15. The increase for 2013, I guess it would be January 2014 would be 1.82%. And the second increase would be 1% for the water. I think for the average annual household, it would be 36 cents the first one and 20 cents the second one.
This is a two-year increase?
Correct. We typically look at our rates every three to five years.
I was a good last month, you had a presentation with this one.
Yes.
Yep. And, Charles, today will be here next month to present a second reading of if this was on the E S for final.
Public hearing.
We have a public hearing next month.
This is basically to introduce the ordinance and get it, get it going?
Yes. Any questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, the, the 1.8% increase is 36 cents.
Yes, that's what the figures were from the study that Unwals have done.
36 cents per month, per gallon?
Per monthly average bill.
How many cubic feet does a household use, three or two or three people?
Hang on, let me find that here.
Is the residential meter size a three-quarter inch?
It's usually, the final estimate, it would be like 350 to 400 cubic feet. I think they have it averaged on 500.
And that's for how many people?
Three, three to four.
So right now the rate for water, 1131, probably 1160 maybe.
Possibly, yes. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to do this. Apologies. I could have had a little scenario, but a lot of the information is in the study that everybody should have, but not in your packets today. It's just less is more. If we keep up with these and do small increments every three to five years, it helps everybody stay on top of our capital improvements and just cost in general. It's, it's altered. We try to stay on top of it.
Yes, sir.
Unless there's other questions, probably move to the passing for reading. 2013, 14.
So I guess I got a question real quick before we go. I'm just thinking out loud here. So you're saying that basically every year, we're going to have to come back and add to this every year. So you say here's the next two years and then we're going to come back and add again. Because the last three years we've added.
Would take the third year without any increase to see where we're at to do another assessment?
We added the last three years and then this was the only year we didn't add, right?
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
That stopped too.
We added 5%, 5%, 5%.
May of 2012 was the last increase.
I just, I guess I.
So we're one year and a half without any increase?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
And the next time, hopefully we're going to do a year, events without.
Yeah, then you'll choose at that time whether you do a rate study again. Analyze it, see, see where you're at.
To get more water customers, maybe to have a raise.
Well, that was our thought. The last time we raised it 5, 5 and 5 and then we are again, not very long after that. We'll say, well, we're going to raise it two more years and now we're going to, and we'll see where we're at.
And we're not selling a lot of water then?
No.
Three years ago.
Yes, cost keeps going up and our infrastructure keeps getting older, so just trying to take care of business.
Prosperous cost goes down.
Still on the scope of things, we're about in the middle, we're counting by size. Or lower.
Yes, on the water side, it was towards the lower end. The sewer is up a little higher.
I appreciate your picture. I share it, but I'm just looking at, we do have to stay up with meeting our expenses. And unless we do, unless we do get a little bit more, maybe gloss and a couple of huge water users, which that affects your revenue and you've got.
I know, I understand. And I'm sorry I didn't ask that before you made your motion. I, I just, it's the mindset, what's going through my mind is, what I'm hearing is, is, well, we're just going to reassess this every year and we're going to continue to raise this every year. And I guess I.
And maybe three years now we won't have to, Jamie, because we have Delphus, we add another 160 people. We have Natasha, we're adding another 100 people as soon as we get them to the one, I firmly get them to one. We have Riley Oath, that's adding another 208 jobs. And hopefully that'll be more water usage.
We are changing all of our meters too, so hopefully updating all of that and all the extra benefits from that will take a big effect as well.
Jamie, I think, I think that no matter whether we do an increase this year and plan for another one, all at one time. The third year, you have to reassess every, every year or two, or otherwise you're not really making sure that you're, that you're running your business very well. And it's what it amounts to, as well as the service.
The way it hit me, and I'm sorry, and I don't mean that's what you intended. Just the way it hit me was, well, we're going to raise it here and here and then we'll see how much we're going to raise it again. You know, and that's the way in my mind.
Apologies, yes.
It's just the way I took it and I, and that's why I just, I, I understand.
Yeah, this, this is all based on a five-year capital improvement plan. And the crystal ball.
Because as your kids get older, they require more funding. Right? If you don't make, raise, get a higher salary, you're going to cut your kids, aren't you, some of their activities?
They probably just need water too because they want to be.
But that's only say, well, it's now, we can afford it this year.
I, I understand. I just, I just wanted to question it and I just, I, we just raised it 5, 5 and 5 and then I just.
Yeah, and you don't see that the deal was on that? That's supposed to raise 15% right off.
I understand. And I know as a counsel, we decided we should do it in segments rather than.
That's a lot of money, 15% is. And that's one of the reasons we're continuing to be raising little or smaller amounts each time now.
I, I agree. That's much better. I apologize, but I know Blum made a motion.
No, it's all right.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Remember, all things free.
Jamie?
Yes.
Victor?
Blake?
Yes.
Glenn?
Terry?
Thank you, counsel. First reading about us. The ordinance 2013 dash 15 sewer rate, first reading.
I don't know if I should say anything or not.
I'm sorry.
Where do we start here? Do you want figures like I just?
Yes.
Looks like on the first increase, it's 4% of the average income or the average monthly bill would be $1.21. The following year is 3% and that would be an additional dollar.
That's on the average.
Average, yes. The average bill.
And the average, what you're looking at on the average bill, right?
Yes, that is, what did they have? They have a $31, $31.45 on the 4% and $32.45 for the 3%.
So much of this is, you know, are solids. Right, Jeff? A lot of this rate increase is of the cost of the treatment?
Yes.
Of solids.
And again, it is a five-year capital improvement plan and expense plan.
So we're increasing the average bill with water into which $2.77.
Two years, after two years. And I think the third year, right now, we're going a year, we'll get on a year and a half without any increase.
Looking at the total bill and hopefully it'll be a five-year, so we don't have to do anything.
If we get more customers, higher usage, it lessens the chance to have to raise it for the third year.
Want a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion we pass, ordinance 2013 dash 15, first reading.
Any further discussion?
Jamie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right, plenty of meeting. Public hearing. Next item is coming to the TIF board. If we don't have time to think about who would like to nominate Adam Quinson. I'm sure I've seen him down. Talked to Adam. He'd be a good fit. impressed by school in Greensburg, kind of, they are doing.
Actually, I said he studied last weekend for about three hours. But TIF called about. He's excited about the opportunity.
I suppose last name?
W E N T C L.
Adam Ousmane.
And being on the TIF board, I talked with Blake about this nomination, being on the TIF board, I think it'll be welcome to have a, a younger person's perspective on the board too. Adam's a young man, 30 years old, so.
I have a second here. Press, counsel, would I like to comment?
You know, here. Just through Blake.